No, it's just my one.
Do I hear a motion to approve this amended?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, non-public minutes made public from April 2nd?
I will make a motion to approve the non-public minutes.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, manifests. Uh, payroll thirty-two thousand three fifty-three ninety-six, payroll liabilities ten thousand two eighty-two fifty-four, accounts payable forty-eight thousand nine forty-three fifty-two, the entry retirement systems seventeen thousand sixty-one and twenty-two cents and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the elementary school.
I'll make a motion to approve the manifest.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we moved. Uh, discussion with MCC regarding tree removal above public comment, so we will start with that. Josh, did you want to lead the charge on what you found, or?
Well, I can certainly, yeah, everybody knows that the seven big pine tree, actually I will have, I had Tim
Yep.
come to ask him if he wants to talk about those seven, and I can talk about the other one across the street.
Okay.
Um, so Josh asked me to go out and look at it the other day, he said during this last big windstorm, a bunch of trees had blown down from the, I guess it would be the east shore out into the bog just upstream of the, uh, the Black Brook culvert under Lead Mine Road, and during the storm, the culvert plugged up. Uh, the concern being there is now, I mean, from an ecological standpoint, having some brush in the bog is not a big deal. The concern being that as these trees rot, every time you get a storm, the water's gonna come up and the brush is just gonna plug the culvert up again. Um, to winch them up out of there is gonna be quite a little process. Um, it's gonna have to be done with a cable machine, cable skidder, um, and basically winched up by pieces. Uh, the trees are so big and trying to pull them out of the water in order to try and do, and we're gonna have to drag them up the steep bank and then out into the forest, and then there's no merchantable value in pitch pine. So it'll just be, you know, tidying them up, finding holes to pick them in, mulching it down. But you're gonna be pulling a piece out, cutting it off, getting it out of the way, winching another piece out, so it's gonna be fairly time-consuming. There's more than seven pitch pines that blew into it, but I feel like the first seven running out, and then there's a couple hardwoods and one pitch pine top are within kind of the area that's gonna be most impactful. Once you get south down the bog there, there's still more trees, but it's far enough up in there, the brush should stay kind of in the bushes up there. I don't think that it's out in the main channel and it shouldn't move and be as much of a problem, is my guess anyway. Yeah, and I guess if the town wants to get that stuff out of there, I've got, uh, one of the logging crews, Bruce and Dave Bowville have a cable machine, they've done work for, uh, on Goodwin Burke Town Forest, they did a timber sale there. And I just showed it to them, they're willing to do it. Um, in terms of cost, it's kind of a crapshoot, I mean, they've gotta pay to get the machine brought over, um, on a low bed. And they're guessing in a couple of days they'll be able to get it done, um, but in term, yeah, never done this before, don't really know how it would go. They're willing to do it by the hour, um, and they certainly do a nice neat job, but, you know, does the town wanna have them do it?
Any idea what their hourly rate is?
For two guys and the machine, a hundred and sixty dollars an hour, which I think is very fair for, you know, two skilled chainsaw operators and a piece of equipment that costs two hundred and fifty grand, I think that's more than fair, but yeah, a hundred and sixty an hour for the lot of it. And depending on the low bed is just on the time, it costs four or five hundred dollars to get the piece of equipment moved over. Um, and they'll just document their time, document the moving expense, you know, they're not, they're not trying to get anything more than just what it costs them to do it.
So the seven trees that fell are actively blocking the culvert?
They are not actively blocking the, the culvert, they are upstream of it in the main channel, and some limbs are loose, and over time, those trees are going to rot and decay. You're gonna have the limbs breaking off, and then every time you get a serious water movement, they'll be carried down right into the culvert or the screen over the culvert. So the concern is not that they're actually blocking it right now, it's that it's going to be a massive maintenance problem over time. This is probably a tractor trailer load of brush or more within a hundred yards of the culvert, just floating in the water. And the hope would be that that will all hold together enough at this point, where it's still fresh, that as you're winching the trees up out of there, most of it will come out. Certainly some's gonna break off while they're doing this, but the hope would be that it holds together if they're careful and slow and, you know, cut it into small pieces and don't horse it up out of there.
Linda, what are constraints with the forest maintenance account as far as paying for this?
The town meeting approved the use of ten thousand dollars of the forest maintenance account money this year, this January to December.
And what does that do to the rest of the forest maintenance? Marcia?
Well, there's almost seventy thousand in the forest maintenance account, sixty-nine thousand nine hundred sixteen. So, it's not the world, I'm sure.
But we can't spend anything other than the original ten thousand approved by town meeting?
This year.
This year.
And my concern is that we have the legal fees for the chain of ponds, they need to come out of that. Plus, we do have scheduled maintenance and monitoring of the properties, which I think we could probably forego.
Yeah, there's, I would say really the only thing in our regularly scheduled maintenance that kind of, you know, before the storm, just what we had planned, we can forego the mowing for a year. The trail work, I have no idea what that's gonna entail, I mean, we've been doing it every year, you know, going through and tidying up the trails. I can only assume they're a disaster like everywhere else, and I don't know what it would take, but I, I'm, my suggestion would be why don't we backburner everything that we had planned? But I don't know, I, off the top of my head, I don't know what the total that we had kinda had allocated was.
I think it was around twenty-five hundred.
It was more than that because we had
Thirty-four is what I remember.
Yeah, 'cause we had the trail work for Goodwin Burke and Wold, we had painting the boundaries of the Barclay Lot.
Right.
We had, I think, the twelve hundred bucks for monitoring and doing the, that. I think it might have been more, it might have been like forty-four, I wish I'd known, I wasn't paying attention when I left here.
It was in that ballpark.
Yeah, so we've got that, but that's, this project here could eat all of that up, and then we haven't even addressed the trails or anything yet.
Right.
And if, you know, the town doesn't have access to the money, that's, it is what it is. I guess you just need to prioritize what you wanna do this year.
And the, the, this machine is gonna go down the, um, power line, right?
Yeah, it's gonna, it's not gonna try and use like the hiking trail, it's gonna come from up by the power line, back down that steep bank, and they're gonna have to cut some stuff. They'll obviously try and avoid cutting bigger trees and just cut small stuff, but try and snake their way down in towards the butts of all these blown over things, and then drag it back up that steep hill and out into the forest somewhere to get rid of it.
Do we need permission from the power company to be out there?
No, you own the, the land, they have a right of way.
The, the power company was out in that same exact spot that you're referring to up above?
Yep.
And they were up there for a few days, so I, I bet there's some clearing up there.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, but I, we need to find places that we can lose this stuff, and I don't, wouldn't wanna do it under the power lines. Uh, we did find right up over the, there, we found a few spots, but sometimes depending on the chance, we might have to drag it to the other side of the power line before you can lose it.
Yeah, I meant access.
Oh, okay, yep, but yes, that would be the goal, is to come in kinda down the steep bank and from the power line at the butts of these trees.
I have some photos if you wanna see.
I've been out there, I went out and saw it.
Have you? I haven't, no, if you, you can send them, yeah.
Marcia, what do we anticipate the legal fee, fees looking like for the chain of ponds?
I, I'm, I really don't know, but I would anticipate they're gonna be close to seven or eight thousand. I mean, I, I would hope that there would be less, but I think we need to budget for that. And we also have to have, I mean, the legal fees are not only for, um, it's a lot to, for the, for the lawyers to go over the easement, and then we have, have expenses involved with the actual wording and, and legal parts of the easement. So other than that, I'm not sure that there's more, I just, I really don't know, that's what I was sort of guessing.
Josh, you say there were other trees you wanted to discuss?
There's the one other tree which is on the other side of the, uh, culvert, and Tim looked at it with me, and it was not something that we could handle personally, and Tim didn't think it was a good idea that even this company that's pulling out, any, anybody with a cable skidder, so we need to hire a crane to come in and lift it up.
It's incredible.
It's hanging on another tree.
And it's split right through the trunk, you can look on either side where it's tipped over, and it's gotta be, what, pushing three feet through? And it's splintered to where you can put your hand right into the crack, so I mean, even just trying to cut it off would be like, I looked at it and was like, eh, I would never even attempt it. But I also don't know how a crane would, I mean, I suppose that's what they do, but I'm trying to picture how you'd even attack it with a crane, and I don't know, 'cause it's a multi-leered big split tree that's tipped over into another big multi-leered tree hanging over the road.
Is that the purchase rec that you put in there?
You just pull it out?
Okay.
It's so big and so heavy, the way that the one on the downstream side?
Yeah.
No.
You couldn't just
It's so big and heavy.
It's gonna fall right on the road.
I don't know anyone that was willing to risk their life that's gonna try and cut that thing off and stump the way it sits right now.
You gotta stabilize it with the crane.
All right, I certainly wouldn't.
I don't know if we can wait, I mean, I don't know if we can wait a year to get this done and get the money the next town meeting, or how could the town, there's the big tree that has the sign on it that's really right up against, I mean, one that's very close to the culvert, and then there's a couple more on the way back. That's nothing that the town could handle to just get the tops off or get it locked to, I don't know, I mean, I'm just guessing that those are the ones that are gonna impact the culvert first, if we could deal with those, but I don't think it's worth getting that big equipment out there for two or three trees.
Last year, we just went through a similar situation with the town budget, and with the call to DRA and some public hearings and so forth, we could access the rest of that forest maintenance money. We just need permission and public hearings, and there's steps that need to be taken, so it's, I'm not saying money is not an object, but we have, all of that money in that account is technically accessible. There's just some administrative legal steps that we would have to follow to get more than ten thousand done. We have town meeting authority for ten thousand this year. But if we needed more to deal with this emergency situation, it's a matter of conducting a public hearing and getting permission from the DRA to do it. So that shouldn't be a, the money is not the concern, 'cause we have it, we're talking about money that we already have, we just don't have access to more than ten thousand dollars. And even getting back to the work that Tim had planned to do, I don't like pushing things off. If there's a way we can get as much of what we wanna do done in this too, we're gonna be ahead of the game rather than, 'cause if we push it off a year, what's gonna happen next winter and spring? We, we might end up pushing that, what we planned to do for two or three years, and
Yep.
It's just a matter of how much do we wanna do, and we can figure it out.
Well, as far as I'm concerned, it needs to be done. I was out there and it's
And I think, the last thing sorry to interrupt, but we don't need any DES permitting right now because it's an emergency. They just went down, we can cut them and get them out of there with minimal impact and everything like that. If we wait a year, we're gonna have to get a shoreline permit to get in there and get them. And then if we wait, they're, inevitably those branches are gonna let go and fall apart.
That is my thought, is that the longer you wait, you know, and I'm not talking about weeks, but I mean, if you were to wait a year and you've got the decay of the pine and then the snow on them next year, you're gonna have a lot more stuff break off trying to manhandle them out of there. I think you've got, you know, a couple of months while everything's green and fresh and as strong as it is to maximize what you're gonna get drug out of there with the, with the trunks of the trees. So, yeah.
It's just too bad it doesn't have value, 'cause there's a
I know, if it was white pine, at least you'd have some value that would help offset the cost of the actual work, but
So when we say emergency, there's imminent damage if we, or there's imminent threat if we have another storm, or?
No, it's the emergency that brought the trees down, and we can deal with it. In close proximity to the storm event, we can deal with it.
As lo, and I'm not even, I, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn, and I'm not stating this as positive fact, but as long as the equipment doesn't enter the wetland, I think that even down the line, we wouldn't need a permit. 'Cause this isn't, in terms of the shoreline, it's not for development or anything, it's within the forest or you're allowed to cut right to the edge of the bog or the swamp. You know, there's fifty percent rules and things like that, so I'm, I'm assuming we're all set there, but in terms of
I know we are right now, I wouldn't wanna take a chance otherwise.
Yep.
Marcia?
Um, in years past, trees have fallen in there, but one or two at a time over the ten-year period, it's not like it happens all the time, and this certainly was more than we've ever seen. And we have always left them because they were, it was just, we've never even thought about taking them out, we just left them there. And my observations of what blocks the culvert is the beaver activity. Now, there were some beavers right in that proximity a few years ago, and they did a pretty good job with those, that lodge was taken down, and I don't know what happened to the beavers, but they disappeared, but there's beavers further upstream, and then there's beavers around Cook's Pond. So they do work that culvert, and that's always been what, in my opinion, blocks the culvert, 'cause when I pull the stuff out, it's all beaver chewed. And I don't think much of the trees that came down actually made it to the culvert, but again, it was only one or two over a long period of time, it wasn't a lot of trees. And when you get past, there's one blow down, that's, that's an old blow down, when you get past that, it's pretty shallow in there, it's deep by the culvert, but it gets pretty shallow back there, and, um, having gotten dogs gotten stuck in the mud, it, I'm sure those trees that are, have fallen in there are pretty deeply in the mud, so it will be hard to pull them out, but I just don't know that, um, I, I just don't, I know that up to now, the problem with the culvert has always been the beavers, and not that the trees have fallen into the, into the water, but again, this is more trees than we've ever seen.
So what was the, do we have even a ballpark estimate as to how much?
I'm guessing around four, based on, you know, just talking with them, them thinking about how long it would take. That would be moving the piece of equipment over there in two full days of them working.
Four thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, um, that's just a, a ballpark guess, but that's, that is our ballpark guess.
And that will take care of all of it?
That will take care of the seven first pitch pines, and I think three maples that are just kinda in the way that blew over too.
Okay.
And that's not getting the ones way up the bog, that's just getting the first ones that are kind of within that, I'm gonna call it striking distance, you know, of the brush.
The ditch channel.
Yeah, the, the ones that are right out in what there is for a beaver. It gets shallower, and, you know, they're a long way off, they're kinda in the grass, there's a lot less of a chance of that brush making its way down, whereas these are kinda right there with their tops out in the water that flows.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Linda, can you dig into what it would take to expend more money out of that account, should it be necessary? Um, I think we need to do it.
Agreed.
Josh?
I, I just think the, the big pine across the street, that's an additional six thousand dollars that you saw on that. I, I really think that's a safety issue, uh, getting that down, we did, I put it out to two different contract, the only two contractors that I know of around here with a crane big enough to pick that up and remove it, and they both gave us, uh, well, one, the first one gave us the price of the six thousand dollars, and the second one said, call the first one. And he's scheduled to, if, if you guys approve, uh, taking that down, I would like to get it down as soon as possible. He said he could do it Thursday, he could be there Thursday morning at eight o'clock. And I could take that out of, I would take that out of the contracted services line.
I mean, it, it's, it's a forest maintenance issue, if we can get into that account.
But it's not on the town's land, is it?
No.
Oh, it's not?
It's on the other side of the road, it's just hung over the town road.
All right, well, then that one?
Who owns that, is that TNC's tree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I, I'm good with that one coming out of contracted services.
The six thousand?
Yeah.
Um, what's TNC?
The ancient service.
Okay. And this isn't anything they would be responsible for?
They don't care about our roads or the electricity.
I, I don't imagine so.
No, they, they wouldn't, it's our problem, we're trying to protect the road. When that tree comes down, it's taking the wires and access to the VA's house. For, did, did, did the crane officer say how long it would gonna take?
A day, a full day.
A full day.
And I would assume that the road would have to be So I guess it would be good to know what it's gonna cost, what it ends up costing to do this, because then you'll know what you're gonna ask for.
Yep.
And then we can take and prioritize within the other stuff. We can prioritize, you know, if we don't wanna mow this year and try and get more of the trails opened up, or we can figure that out, but that's down the line, it's not a safety issue, it's just a figure it out.
The operation would take?
For which one, Donna, can you?
The tree?
One day.
One day?
The big day, okay, so the access from the east side of, um, I mean, the west side of Lead Mine Road is, it's barely passable. So would that be attended to before Thursday?
No.
No.
No?
No.
So I'm a lock-in?
It is, my understanding is it's passable, it's not great, but it's passable, but that's why we're coordinating with you now to let you know. Josh, is the other side passable to a reasonable extent?
Yes.
I have photos.
I understand that. Regardless, we have to take the tree down because it's a safety concern, and we're, we're letting you know that the road is going to be closed for a day starting eight AM on Thursday. Unless you want me to leave the tree there, and then it can fall in the road and, and wait to clean it up.
Well, let me see if I should answer that.
That's kinda the only option. All right. We're all set.
All right, well, I will, hopefully next week, maybe we can try and get that in, either next week or the week after, try and get those trees up out of there.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, public comment. No public comment. Uh, historical society bids for painting. Yep, Nancy, it looks like we have, oh yeah, I have two bids here. Does the historical society have a preference?
I would, I would say Parker.
Yep. I'm glad you said that. My only, I, I'm questioning it because it looks like Parker wants to scrape and contain any potential lead paint, yet his quote is less money, and the other quote for more money wants to paint over any lead paint. Not that it makes a difference if we go with Parker, but it's, doesn't make much sense to me.
Or the other quote, the other guy just doesn't wanna do the job?
That's kinda what it looks like. This is coming out of which we funded a town meeting with.
Another ten thousand.
And what's in there now?
I don't know, is there a, behind you? I tried to get that non-public, but they might Yeah. I have to go to the very end, that last, that last, last page, it should say, look at that, it was
So, so after town meeting, the balance should have been thirty thousand?
Right, 'cause we funded it with twenty thousand last year, added ten thousand this year, and that was tempting, so that makes sense.
This quote came in at twenty-three-two total?
Yep.
I'm okay with it.
I am too.
Do we, do you need a motion and a vote for this one?
No, it wouldn't hurt, just, and just take it out of the expendable trust fund, but we'll, you'll, there'll still be more paperwork for that, but this will be the way down.
All right, I will make a motion that we suspend twenty-three thousand two hundred out of the historical society fund for BD Works painting, uh, and painting the historical society building and roof.
I'll make a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Fair enough?
Fair enough, do you, do you contact, do I contact?
I can't.
Linda can do it.
Okay.
She offered.
Thank you so much. Nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and we have a request for seventy-three thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars eighty-four cents of the trustees for the Summer Lake Dam Improvement ETF. And this was for Sean Bergeron's work and MSNK's studies on the dam.
Yes, there was four, four individuals.
And that was a thirty thousand dollar fund as well, I believe?
I know there was enough to cut this.
Yeah, there's plenty in there for that. Any questions?
No, this was all for evaluation and testing?
Yes, and do we know the hydraulic and hydrology studies are completed yet? It's probably not in this.
I thought they were, when we, when Sean was here last, we were like, we had everything we needed, now we're just gonna wait to, to decide when we're actually gonna pull the trigger and
Okay.
But, yeah.
See, this is where I think the H&amp;H analysis wasn't See, this is where I think the H&amp;H analysis wasn't completely done yet.
Okay.
The H&amp;H and the breach analysis weren't complete yet. And I think we were waiting on those two studies to decide what repairs exactly needed to be done. There was some, we're at a standstill for now until those were done, is my understanding.
Do you want me to put this aside until we have everything announced for the money all at once?
Uh, I don't think they're gonna wanna wait. Because I don't think, I think that's how they planned this out, was to get paid in steps.
Well, they've been paid.
Yeah, okay.
We paid it out of the general fund and this is gonna reimburse the general fund, yeah.
I don't know, I don't think we need to wait, unless you do.
Is it easier accounting to wait, or is it just-
No, it would just be, we'll do, we'll make, we'll do the same action again with the remaining amount at another meeting.
Okay, yeah, if it doesn't matter either way, get it done.
Alright, I will make a motion to request that was drawn by the trustees of the trust funds from the Silver Lake Dam Improvement Expendable Trust Fund in the amount of $17,833.84. This will reimburse the general fund for payments made to MSK Engineers for invoices 16348 and 16508 and to Bergeron Technical Services LLC for invoices dated January 11th and March 7th, 2024. The invoices were for an H&amp;H analysis and breach analysis review and report of the same for the Silver Lake Dam.
I will second that motion.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's a clarification, is this is paying for those two studies that were just completed. Still have Conservation Commission alternates under old business, but you guys did not meet.
Correct. So we'll discuss that at the next conservation meeting.
So we'll table that till after the May meeting? Select my grade, do you have a list?
I do. Mike left, but I had, the EPA just released funding for PFAS in drinking water remediation. So that just came out last week. I meant to print out the stuff to share. But obviously I think that's something we'd be able to take advantage of to help fund the remediation of the well here at Town Hall. So I'll get that information to everybody so you guys can look at that. I guess Representative Pappas was heavily involved and advocated for that. So I think we have folks who know, folks in the office. So that would hopefully facilitate that. It's, I think it's nine billion or something, it's a lot of money. So that would be good. Linda, did the question about the bond go to, for Banfield Road, does that go to the attorney yet?
Uh, no, he's not back till tomorrow. He was late for two weeks, so it's, yeah, I haven't been able to talk to him, but that's on my list.
Thanks. Let me see, oh, and Josh, it sounds like you had additional detail about the materials being used for the ball field. And we had folks who wanted to review that.
Sure.
Do you want him to review it now, or do you just want a copy of it?
Um, copy and then, yeah, if you have a copy and then I can send that out to folks. Thank you. Okay. And then I think folks had questions about the testing, but yeah. We'll look at that and let's know if there are any more questions. I think that's all I have for today.
Don't have anything on my list, but I do wanna extend a public thank you to DPW first responders and the line crews that were out at this past storm. It was treacherous to say the least, so thank all of you that are here and thank you to those that aren't. Linda?
Uh, no, I don't have anything.
So you know what, I'm sorry, I have a question. We have the add-out for the, for the DPW general maintenance openings. That's replacing, there was some, that's replacing or is that adding?
Replacing two people.
Two, okay. Thank you.
Josh?
I didn't do a full detailed list of what we've done over the last two weeks, but-
You've been busy?
Yeah, we've been very, very busy. I'll stay on camera, I will fill in Ted's potholes up on Forest Pines as soon as possible.
Perfect.
We haven't been able to get to that, but we have started to do the spring grading. I think we did Lead Mine today.
Lead Mine looks great. Lead Mine looks great.
Yeah.
It was just up there.
Yeah, one end of it.
One end of it.
We did finally open Glynn Hill today, we took the barriers down and, but we still had to remove snow off the road. It's passable, but I wouldn't recommend. But I, an ambulance did go up through there for whatever reason to go to the fire at Paradise Springs today.
They went up over Glynn Hill?
Yeah, down over. We were just coming off, just coming off it and opened it and they were, went flying up through, I don't know why, but to go to the fire.
So, not to interrupt, but we've had a problem with the ambulance using Glynn Hill because they try to come up it in the middle of winter.
Yeah.
And there's been two calls at a residence, one residence, right at the top of Vicford Road. And what they're doing is that the ambulance is coming out of West, uh, coming out of West Ospey. They're going up, they're going around and they're coming up Glynn Hill and they find out that it's closed and they have to turn around and come back to East Madison and go up and then go up Mooney Hill Road. And that's happened twice now. It happened a year ago or so and we had somebody in here to complain about it. The resident was in here to complain about it and we addressed it and then it happened to that same resident again this spring, from what I understand, so.
And that's an action ambulance?
It is, yeah. So apparently we need to have another discussion about their GPS system because-
Yeah, I don't know why, I, I was assuming because right when that fire was coming up, we were just coming out of there with a loader and a grader and it really was not in good shape. And the ambulance with the lights and the car behind it, you know, came flying up past us. Like, oh God, I'm glad we got that open.
GPS system really likes Glynn Hill.
Yeah. So anyways, that's open, what else? We burnt the brush at the transfer station. There was a lot of brush that got brought in this weekend. I'm assuming there's gonna be a lot more coming.
Somebody asked me about a wood chipper?
Uh, our wood chipper broke today. Blew the clutch in our wood chipper. And it's a 1989 wood chipper. And we're trying to get the parts, the clutch parts. But in the interim, we're gonna, we gotta rent one, you know, from Coleman's or whoever. If there's even one available, we asked Coleman's today if they would be available for Thursday. We're still trying to get some of the trees off of Lead Mine. Obviously Lead Mine needs a lot of chip in, but East Madison Road, there's a lot of roads that still have. We're probably gonna hire a truck for, a log truck, I've gone through seeing the sizes, a few rows like Alexander Ave on the end of East Shore Drive. That is just too much and Ospey and Freedom did it. Ospey did it for a whole week with a log truck, just picking up the piles of brush and hauling them away. Freedom was actually doing it today on the Lake Road. Danny Cook, see if we can get him for a couple days to finish up cleaning up Alexander and East Shore, the worst roads. We did also clean all the brush. It was Friday night before consolidated, finally put the lines on, Forest Lake Hill. But we got that all cleaned up yesterday, so it's passable. Dave, I don't know how many loads you've hauled in the last few weeks.
Two plus three.
Five, two. So yeah, we put in a lot of hours in the last couple weeks. Had a lot of stuff and kinda chased our tails a little bit, but we're getting there.
Appreciate it.
Question, if I may? The culvert on Modoc Hill Road?
Oh, yeah.
Have you seen it?
I have.
Was that repaired?
It was band-aided until we can repair it, which is what we appropriated at town meeting.
So it, it's, the road's closed?
Until we are able to repair it.
I suggest maybe you update the town's website?
It says that.
Because it says it's passable by passenger vehicles.
No, above it, above that, there's a thing that says that it's closed. Please find alternate routes.
I'll look again, I might have missed it, but. When did that happen?
Friday. The Friday of the storm, so not this past Friday, but the one before, right? Yeah.
No.
Oh no, 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 that was the rain.
The rain that we had last week.
That was last Friday.
Yeah.
Last Friday.
The little rain we had did that?
Well, between the rain and the warm temperatures and the snow coming off all that watershed, it's-
Yeah, so.
Speaking of, did we get our steel plates out of there?
Today, yeah.
So the road is closed until we can get somebody in there to fix it permanently. Did we, have we reached out to them on that?
Yep, yes, and they have to order the culvert and, which they already have.
Yep.
It's time-consuming to get it made and we gotta let the water drain down some. They're not gonna put that in without, you know, we get the water down. We've started taking apart the dam, but next week we're gonna actually take out a good part of the dam.
Another question, if I may? I'm wondering if Lead Mine Road, it's loaded with dead fallen trees and brush. Is that on the list of brush clearing and tree clearing?
I'm sure it is.
Yeah, everywhere where there's trees down, it's on the list, but as I said, we, we were actually gonna try to get to it today when we were grading it and like we lost the clutch on the-
I think most of the damage is from Blackbrook Road to East Shore Drive. That's where you'll find most damage down.
Can I just say, I know the co-op was out there for like three days straight, 24 hours a day. The equipment they brought in, I'm sure Eversource was doing similar stuff and the person power they had out there was phenomenal. So kudos to those guys and the hours they put in. I know Aspen was in there and doing unbelievable, the work that they did. I don't know who's paying for all of that, but there was a lot of work down.
Yeah, you'll see, yeah, you'll see it next time your bill comes in. There was 500 line crews in Carroll County last weekend.
I spoke to some of the workers out there and they said that that's, Lead Mine Road and East Shore Drive were some of the worst in the town.
Josh, you all set?
I wanna add one thing to this. I was out, I think the last Saturday after the storm when all those crews were out there fixing those eight broken poles between Lead Mine, they had 10 tanked trucks out there. But anyways, there was a tree climbing crew out there and I asked them if they'd take down that big pine while they were right there and they declined. But the guy, there was one guy from Plymouth, he says, "They told me this was a class six road." And I said, "No, it's actually a class five road, no road to some colleges, blah, blah," whatever. He goes, "Oh, I was gonna, I was gonna say, this is better than our dirt roads, class five roads in Plymouth." So, roads aren't that bad.
Chief King?
Uh, yeah, just to touch on that a little bit, the, if you see water coming across the road, don't try to drive through it. It's amazing that you actually have to verbalize that and to say to people, "Don't try to drive through a road that's flooded." So we did have someone try to make it across the culvert on Modoc and almost made it, but they did not make it, so.
Like they always say, turn around, don't drown.
That's, that would have been, they got close, right to the end and then sunk right down in and it's gonna be pretty expensive because you got a nice little ticket from the police department and the tow truck and insurance bill, I'm sure it won't be cheap either, so. That being said, it's, I don't, the fire department's not here, but boy, they had two really good saves this week. One of them today, down at the Traditions, they really, they really stopped that building. It was there right when they were getting there and that was, that was close. So they did a hell of a job bundling that up, so good on them for that. Other than that, you know, my stuff's nothing really interesting this week. We're still, still pretty busy, moving on.
You already made it to me, oh my goodness.
Good.
Uh, let's see, softball started today. T-ball starts Saturday. We have quite a turnout for both. We are starting a new softball team for grades two and three. Called the rookies, kind of, I guess. And we have a good turnout with that too. That will start after April vacation, April 29th. Very exciting about, excited about all those things. Friday night, we have teen night. They are, they have a bus and they're going to the movies Friday night, so that'll be fun. They're going to see-
Kong versus Godzilla, something, yeah.
The new one, yes, that'll be fun. Um, so that's Friday night.
The Mother's Day tea coming up.
Party and picnic, yes. If you are interested in attending and haven't signed up, please sign up on our link on Facebook. We need to get a number for food. It's really gonna be very cute, very special for the lady in your life that you'd like to treat. Doesn't have to be your mother. Special lady in your life and that is Sunday, May 5th, so it's the weekend before Mother's Day.
Summer camp registration.
Summer camp registration, yes. We have like 24 signed up right now. We'll take 40 kids total. They have until May to sign up. We have awesome instructor counselors this year, so that's very exciting. It's gonna be doing, we're starting to talk about swimming lessons more. One of our instructors is trying to get her certification and we would like to have the beach foot of the lake use on Mondays and Wednesdays for summer camp and hoping to add on Tuesdays for like the non-summer camp kids. So we're still trying to figure it all out, but that's what we're hoping so that all of the children of Madison will be able to have swimming lessons. Yes, yes.
Regardless, summer camp wants the foot of the lake Monday and Wednesday?
Yes, at least the morning. Last year we used it like 9:00 to, depending on the weather, depending on how busy it was. Some days we'd stay till 2:00 PM, some days we'd leave before lunch and head back to the school, or to Burke Field. So that, I kinda like that flexibility. I usually talk with the bus driver that brings us and he's usually close by if we need him to come back in the mornings. And again, we'll, we'll head out if it gets too busy. We don't wanna be, you know, take it over the beach or anything like that.
Make sure that bus has a sticker.
Oh my goodness. I'm gonna bar mine, right?
Yeah, that's fine, everybody else does it anyway.
Just got to tape it to the window.
Start the pot a little bit, yeah.
Outta here very shortly.
No, that's not it. What was the other thing?
Electronic payments.
Yes, we're trying to still figure that out, yes.
We had said that at, a few meetings ago, that we would address it again after town meeting.
Yeah.
It's after town meeting and Kate and I, the amount of people that come in and wanna pay, it's a consistent interruption all day long. Of, you know, here's 35 bucks, here's 30 bucks. So trying to initiate this whole thing of being able to do some electronic payments will definitely relieve everybody, I think. Even the people trying to come up with, you know, 20 bucks cash or a check, you know. So Kate, Heather and I were talking about bringing it back to you guys to make sure that it's okay to start moving forward and I can-
Let's do it.
Go with the bank and see what we need to do to get this all moving.
And were we gonna do square for the fees?
Well, I guess, yeah, that, those were the details that I guess would need to be worked out. But initially, like we have to, the bank has to get us a new account and all that kinda stuff to be able to do this. So if I start the account part of it, maybe on the next meeting, we could talk about-
Yeah.
How to manage- How to manage, because when it comes to fees, you're into, if you wanna call it a fee on top of it, then you might need a public hearing to be able to charge a fee. So I guess.
Before summer camp, we already, oh, right, for the extra fee.
You know, I, well, I don't, yeah, I don't know if I'm being too persnickety on that, or.
I think we need to set up an account with Square, but it needs to be attached to a town email somehow, because, God forbid, Heather decides to leave us. It needs to be attached to an email that's attached to the town.
Yeah, uh, we, I could make something that's, you know, whatever, uh, something that's a Madison dash in it.
Yep.
We still have, I think, one or two emails available.
And set up the Square account using that email.
And for donations?
I think we can still use Square, they just need to be labeled when they go in, so that we know how to move them when they come out.
Yeah.
Right, so, well, we've, well, Kate got us set up with a book, so anytime somebody comes in, depending on what they're paying, we flip to that page and we log it. But thinking that if maybe some way from you or me, or even somebody, something similar, if there's electronic payments that are coming in that we don't see, that, that you guys are aware of. The whole idea is, like you said, there has to be something in writing so that we can say to our treasurer, you know, ten dollars is going into the general fund and ten dollars is going into the, uh, expendable trust, a revolving fund, rather. Um, so there's just gonna be some.
I think we're gonna just need to set up a Square account, and that's what it, to see how, to make it work.
Yeah, no, it's, it would be very easy to select a fee type or donation, so that it would, we'd run a report and you'd know exactly.
Yeah, then that's.
Cause now with the sports fees, that's year-round now, and then summer camp is huge.
Yeah.
And it is, it's taken a lot out of you, and it's hard for me to get here sometimes with checks, so it's, yeah.
Yeah, that's, so just automate all of that.
And majority of people use a card anyways nowadays, and it's almost difficult to get a check together for some people.
Yeah.
So, um, so, uh, yeah.
Yes, please.
I'll, I'll get my part done, um, with the bank, and we'll put on the next one to talk about the logistics, the next agenda for the logistics.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
Thank you, no, I'm glad you reminded me. I knew there was a couple things.
Anything else? Signature.
With that, I did get in touch with the, um, insurance company.
Oh, okay.
About having the camp, the swim camp and all that, and, um, there's no problem with that, we're still all covered, that kinda thing.
Yeah.
The suggestion that she made, um, is, um, keep in mind multiple employees when you have swim lessons. You know, that fact that granted, you know, the instructors in the, in the water with the kids or whatever, but who's watching the kids on the beach? And what happens if one of those kids has to go to the bathroom, then they walk away, so it's gonna take a lot of coordination and multiple people to be able to have a safe swim approach.
Yeah.
Is, was her, you know, distractions happen.
Yeah.
And that's her, was her main concern about that, but other than that, we're covered to be able to have an offer of swat.
I think the goal is to have four counselors at all times, plus possible CITs as an extra set of eyes.
Yeah, and then the one, um, so far, it's just the one swim lesson teacher, instructor. Um, and she, um, is still learning how to group them and like, keep the kids, you know, and, um, the different things that she's gonna need for that, too, yeah.
And, um, and she, um, Nicole, our prime X person, um, thought that they would kind of, the instructions that she'd learned from the Red Cross would, would also include that, you know?
Yes.
In terms of setting up for this, who you need to be.
Yes. Yes.
Working the whole thing, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so for the most part, we're.
Good.
We're covered.
Cool, thank you.
Yay, thank you.
Sorry, I jumped in again.
No, that's good.
Right, signature items.
There's a lot.
Yeah.
Sorry. So that, those first two letters, um, from New Hampshire Co-op and Eversource, um, every year, the assessor asks for that information from the co-op and, um, Eversource. It's just a annual letter that goes to them.
Those are the ones that did last week, last meeting?
I need to end Jake. And you've got those excavation levies that just come through once a year. There was one from Pike, um, two from AJ Clemmons on and one from Coleman and the Book of Trust.
And are most of these the ones along one thirteen?
Uh, yeah, those are the ones, yeah. The, the other three in town are, um, Purdy Spring has a gravel pit. Um, but they use it, everything they do is, um, sort of exempt, cause they use it for their own.
Yep.
Use, so they still have to report it, but they don't pay any tax or anything like that, and then, um, high street.
Yep. Little kids softball?
Oh, yeah. I guess I did put her a signature. Oh, no, I did, she's done. Yeah.
Just needed one?
Uh, yeah, just wants a signature.
These are the levies.
Is this a new form? Volunteer statement?
Uh, no, they were, they're, that's what they're supposed to, uh, like, to show their intent, I guess, is what it is. That would suggest that form came from the insurance company.
And this is the purchase requisition for that tree on Lead Mine.
That was up, that one was from Brown.
Oh.
They pulled one last year, but didn't end up cutting, so they reported a no cut, and they just started new one.
All right, with that, we will enter non-public session per RSA ninety-one A colon three two little B, the hiring of any person that is a public employee, roll call vote.
Select my grade, aye.
Adam, aye.